Okay.
Okay, I believe it's 5:30. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Right. I'm calling the meeting in order. Welcome to the January 24, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. And with that, I would like to ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Long.
Here.
Counselor Randall. Counselor Richardson.
Present.
Counselor Runyon.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Present.
Mayor May.
Here, present. Present. Okay, I'd like to call on Counselor Richardson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Richardson.
Ledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic. For which stands one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. And now, item four is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll move to, Mr. Mayor, move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Remove by Counselor Randall and seconded by Counselor Long to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item five is a presentation of the annual audit for the City of the DOWS and the Columbia Gorge Regional Airport for the 2021 fiscal year. And I trust that our Finance Director would like to introduce Mr. Gillette from from Talbot, Corvola, and Warwick. Is that, am I assuming that correctly?
That is correct.
Perfect, Mr. Mayor.
Angie, why don't you, why don't you go ahead and introduce him? Although he probably doesn't need production since I just.
So this year, we, as you all know, we all went, we went with a new auditor this year. And it's been a pleasure working with Tim Gillette with TKW. And he'll be presenting the audit this evening for the airport and for the City of the DOWS.
Great. Thanks, Angie. Appreciate the introduction. Good evening, Council and everyone else. Here to present the annual comprehensive financial report for the city and for the URA and for the airport. I assume everybody has a copy of this great document. Probably 130 pages. I thought the best thing to do would be to go through this page by page by page. Okay, I'm kidding about that. It's a big document. This is really Angie and her staff's document. The auditors audit it, but it's really Angie's responsibility and her staff, of course. So my, my part of this is actually pretty small. I'm going to go fairly quickly. I'm going to assume that's what the council would like. At any time, if you want to ask questions, happy to stop and answer them. So the first part I would point to is our report. The way you guys number your pages, it's a little different because it's not a, I guess it's A through C in big letters. So the good part is down at the bottom of the first page where we give our opinion and we say the financial statements are fairly presented. Another, another way to say that is it's a clean audit opinion. No issues. It's the kind of opinion you want to get from your auditor. Now, we go on for two more pages talking about the level of responsibility we take for each of the other parts of the report. Not going to walk through all of those, but, but they are there. And again, happy to take questions if you have any. Our report then is followed by Management's Discussion and Analysis, which is indexed with small letters, A, B, C. I always encourage everybody to read the Management's Discussion and Analysis, MDNA. This is a great overview of what's in the bigger document. I mean, I know not everybody is going to read all 130 pages. But, but you should spend time to read the eight pages or whatever it is. It has some comparative information that the basic financial statements do not. And goes into some detail about, about what's happened and the reasons for some of those changes. Excuse me. The MDNA is followed by the basic financial statements. I'm not going to spend much time talking about those at all. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at those. And if you have questions, I'm happy to take them. But we're not really here to analyze the, the statements per se. The basic statements are followed by the footnotes, which actually are part of the basic financial statements. Have a lot more information about various items in the financials and you can read through those. So only, I guess, a couple of things I would point out in the financial statements and we'll get to in some of the letters. There were a couple of changes this year. You had recorded a reimbursement district back in, I forget what year, but a while back before Angie even got there. And our determination was that that should have never been recorded. And we understand you want to keep track of that, but, but until somebody actually starts to hook up to that, the the necessary criteria are not there for it to be recorded. So it's a receivable and a payable. They both go away, so it has no effect on net position or anything, but, but should not have been recorded. The other, the other large item was the airport debt, which hadn't been recorded in the city's books under the theory that this was conduit debt, which is something that can happen. Again, this, and this is something that was done before Angie got there. But our, our reading of the, of the standards would indicate that that is not conduit debt. It is a debt of the city. Now granted, the airport is responsible for paying back the city. But we believe it should be recorded in the city's books. Has both a payable and a receivable. So again, doesn't affect net position. So we've made those changes.
Could I just verify, clarify? I'm seeing that on, it says page two at the top and page 145 of 283 on the bottom on our numbering system. Those are the two bullet points. One is about the 1,061 and the other is the airport, 1,577. Is that right?
I think what I, what I've got, Rod, is numbered differently than what you have, so I'm having trouble relating to that exactly.
Okay. Well, I think this is what the council has in front of them. Page 140, 145 of 283. List those two bullet points. Thank you.
Okay. I will, I will talk a little bit more about those as we go on. So again, if other questions come up.
Mr. Gillette?
Yeah.
I think Rod is referring to the management letter.
Okay.
It's in the Audit Comments and Disclosures.
Okay.
The same two bullet points that you just talked about.
It does appear again in the letter, what we call the letter to those charged with governance or the SAS 114 letter. So that's probably, probably where you're looking, I'm guessing. But again, I will, I will talk more about them when we get to that letter. All right. The last thing I was going to talk about in the, in the city's financial statements is there is a report on the very back. The report in accordance with Oregon State Regulations, the state makes the auditors look at certain things. And there's a list of bullet points there that, that you can see about deposit of public funds, indebtedness limitations, et cetera. We found no issues with anything there except for one very small over expenditure, $305 for debt service in the sewer plant construction fund. So very, I would consider it to be a very minor thing. A lot less than I have on most of my clients, right? Now, as far as the city goes, I have two other letters. I have a letter addressed to management and the Board of Directors, which I would talk about next. And this is a letter where we talk about internal control and some, let's say deficiencies or weaknesses we found in the system of internal control. And we found four things that we bullet point on this. And this could conceivably be even what you're talking about, Rod. There was, let's see, an adjusting entry in the, for property tax. Basically, I think this was just a case of the wrong numbers getting picked up off of a county report. And then a change in the allowance for doubtful accounts in the court receivables. And I think this was, was where the allowance hadn't been changed for a couple of years and just needed to be updated for historical, historical trends. Correct. Then on the next page, we talk about the, the reimbursement district at the top there, the 1,061, 949. And again, it's both a receivable and payable, so no effect on the, call it the bottom line of the city. But remove both of those. But in a sense, that's offset because of the next bullet point, the, the airport debt, which is a liability of the city. Although again, they have a receivable from the airport that will make that up. So that was recorded of 1,577. So those two things kind of offset each other to some extent. And again, neither one of them affects the bottom line. Thank you. And then the other letter addressed to the Audit Committee, this is the letter to those charged with governance. Under professional standards, there are a number of topics we have to communicate with you all about. We talk about respective responsibilities of the auditor and management and the plan, scope, and so forth. Significant accounting practices, estimates in the, in the financial statements that you should be aware of and consider. We talk about audit adjustments. And then we talk about recently issued accounting standards. And I will say, I mean, this list kind of goes on and on, but Governmental Accounting Standards Board, the GASB, issues pronouncements on a somewhat regular basis that change the accounting for, for, hopefully to improve the accounting for certain things. I've listed probably about 10 different statements that will come into effect in the next year or two. Probably most of these won't have much effect for the city. The one that will have probably the bigger effect and it will be on the airport is GASB 87 on leases. Starting with this, this year that we're in right now, so fiscal year end 63022, leases have to be recorded differently. And the airport has a bunch of leases. And even though they're only, most of them are 12-month leases, that, that's long enough that the GASB thinks those have to be recorded. So there will be a change in the airport reporting. Might also mention, it's not really in any of this stuff, but just, just kind of an FYI. The auditor's report undergoes a big change this next year. So just probably doesn't matter to anybody but the auditors or the accountants. But the form of our report, the three pages that I talked about at the start, it will get rearranged and some of the words will be different. So it will look different next year, but it, it will be essentially the same, just in a slightly different form. So that's the city. I would talk about the URA next just because it can go really quick. It's the, essentially the same thing. It's a clean audit opinion, fairly presented. Again, I'd recommend you read the MDNA. There are financial statements, there are footnotes. And again, there's that audit report on, with Oregon State Regulations and those various bullet points. And there are no issues in the URA. And the URA also has a similar letter to that last one we talked about. The letter to those charged with governance with our responsibilities and your responsibilities. And all the new pronouncements that are coming out. So all I'm going to say about the URA unless anybody has questions. And then I will get into the airport. The airport is a little bit different. Not wildly different. Again, your, your financial statements, we just record on them. And again, it's a clean opinion, fairly presented, you know, the kind of opinion you want to get from the auditor. Again, followed by Management's Discussion and Analysis, which again, you should read. Followed by the financial statements themselves and then some footnotes and then the Oregon State Regulations thing. The thing the airport has that the city and the URA don't have is a single audit. When you expend more than $750,000 in federal monies, you're required to get something called a single audit or audit under uniform guidance. The federal government tells us what we have to do on this. There's a whole methodology for picking out what are major programs, which isn't, which isn't too hard with the airport because you've only got one program. So that's pretty easy. And then they tell us all the various compliance requirements that you have to meet when you're spending that money. So I mean, like, like anything, there's no free lunch. There's a, there's a whole list of things you have to be compliant with to not have issues of spending that money. So we issue a separate report on the single audit. There's actually, actually two reports. The first one's on internal control over the financial statements and also over compliance. And happily, there were no findings. So that's a good thing. That's followed by the report on actual compliance itself. And again, there's no findings there. So that's also a very good thing and actually pretty unusual. I think you guys could pat yourselves on the back that, that we didn't have any findings because it's pretty common, especially you haven't had a single audit in the past. And the compliance requirements are pretty detailed and it's easy to run afoul of some of those in small ways. So to have no findings your first time through is, is pretty good. That is it. There's also a, a letter to those charged with governance for the airport. Does pretty much the same things as the, as the city and the URA. So I'm not going to go through that. And that's kind of it.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Runyon.
I just wondered, is there any complexity to doing an audit that concerns a city in Oregon and the state of Washington County or Clickithead County? Does that make it more complex? Do they have to have a separate audit of their own?
No, you're talking about for the airport. It's still one, still one legal entity, although you've got two joint venture partners for the thing. But the audit itself of the airport is not really any different than, than if it was wholly in Oregon.
So some rules that Washington might have compared to Oregon, no differences in this regard?
Nothing that affects the airport. Okay. I would say I'm certified in Washington as well, so just for what that's worth.
That's worth a lot.
Any other questions for Mr. Gillette or Ms. Wilson? I had alerted the staff last week that I was going to be asking the question today, tonight. I was wondering if the staff or Mr. Gillette, but probably the staff could summarize what funds have unrestricted fund balances? In other words, fund balances where the, the money that's in the accounts can be used for any legal or lawful purpose. As opposed to being restricted like water and sewer where you can't use, you know, you only have to use money for that for water and sewer projects or for operations. Julie would, I guess Angie is, I should, we should let Angie speak at this point.
Tim, did, were you wanting to touch on that and then, or would you like me to?
I can touch on it and you can add to it, Angie. How's that?
That sounds good.
And I'm going to say, first off, I'm going to say a little bit of my approach to this is different from a lot of governmental accountants. Because I, I've only been auditing governments for a little over 20 years now. So I actually started out doing commercial work. So I look at the statement of net position before I look at all the fund statements. And I think the statement of net position, which is a full accrual statement, is, is worth more than the fund's statements. Now, all the, all the people that have been in government accounting for a long time are, you know, going boo boo, I hate that. But the fund statements are close to being cash basis. So those of you that, that have a business or a commercial background know that when, when you're doing, working with cash basis statements, there are things that you can change and manipulate and present a picture that maybe is less than, maybe less than true. So first, first off, I give, I will give the city a big thumbs up for having a positive unrestricted net position. And, and you do have that. And many of my clients do not. Just, just for fun, I carry around a couple of pages from the City of Portland. The City of Portland's unrestricted net position is a deficit of about four and a half billion dollars. That's billion with a B. So the fact that you have a positive position is a good thing. So give yourselves a pat on the back for that. But you're probably more interested in the fund statements. So I will, I will talk briefly about that. The, if I can get to the right page here. Okay, so your yeah, okay, not quite there. Okay, your unassigned fund balance in the general fund is $5.3 million. That's, that's not a bad number. I would say you, you probably have a policy of trying to maintain a certain unassigned fund balance in the general fund. And different places have different rules of thumb, whether they want, you know, four months' worth of expenditures in that fund or if it's some percentage or whatever. I mean, it, you know, again, you're getting a lot of your revenue from property taxes. So that probably doesn't start rolling until November. So you need to be able to carry yourself until that time. So you certainly want to leave some money there. But with that said, there is $5.3 million sitting there in unassigned. So it's up to you to figure out how best to, to use that money. I guess. I mean, I know there are things changing in the DOWS with the, the data farm there and some other things that could increase receipts over time. Plus, I don't know how much, if you're able to get any more federal money or if any of that's in the works with various programs that are out there. I guess I would say don't spend one-time money on, on ongoing things. But other than that, that, that's kind of my two cents on. And you're getting, you're getting some personal opinion here now. And you're getting, you're getting some personal opinion here now, as opposed to maybe the, you know, the audit guy. So Angie, you probably have some thoughts on this as well.
Um, you know, I think that you expressed what I was going to express, and that is, we do have a strong beginning fund balance than when we came into the fiscal year of 2021. And ending, to have a strong ending fund balance and with it, not using a lot of our contingency money this year, not having to use our reserve for future expenditure. We're going to come into the next year with, again, another strong beginning fund balance. And we originally budgeted to receive, you know, our beginning fund balance to be a little bit over $5 million. And like you said, it is about, you know, 5.3. So it, it ended up being, you know, more than what we anticipated. We do use, we like to keep 10% for our contingency, for appropriations. And we do budget four to six months of reserves for our ending fund balance to carry us over to the next year till we start receiving our property tax revenue in November and some of our other revenue sources that we receive. So I, you are correct. I think we're, we're looking at, you know, having a, a strong $5.3 million at the beginning of the year with probably higher than that when we end this year.
You're talking about the general fund, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. What about other funds that may have unrestricted fund balances? I was looking at, like, the Capital Projects Fund, some of, is any of that restricted or unrestricted?
Those are dedicated to certain projects, so when those funds were created, they're, they're dedicated to certain projects. So the Capital Projects Fund was dedicated for projects within the city. So those could be used for, you know, the renovation of the city hall, which is outlined in the narrative of the budget.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the staff or Mr. Gillette? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gillette, for being here. We're glad that you have apparently given us a pretty good grade for financial stability in our financial reporting. And we're, we're sorry that the city of Portland doesn't measure up to the city of the DOWs. So with that, any last call for questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Good job, Angie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Five minutes per person will be allowed. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for city council consideration. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council for up to five minutes about any item or subject that is not on the agenda? If you do, please raise your hand.
Russ Brown was...
You can't see my hand, Rich.
I can't see your hand, Russ, but I hear your familiar voice. Mr. Russ Brown would like to address the council. Go ahead, Russ.
Thank you. Russ Brown, 903 14th Street. Most of you know that I served on council for five years, and my main reason for getting involved in council was to advocate for public works. Through water streets, basically. And, and mostly the streets, because I believe that sewer and water have an adequate revenue flow to pay for any maintenance or most of the maintenance that they do on a regular basis. But the street department is sadly underfunded. There's, I think currently, maybe six people on the street department. One of them's a mechanic, takes care of all the equipment that belongs to the city. Our, our rating on our streets is down to the low 60s, I believe. I'm not sure exactly what that means. All I know is that 100 would be really special, or somewhere well above 60. I, I've been kind of figuring out what I think it would take. We really need to start making progress. We need to get that street rating going up instead of down, because it's no better than it was when I was on council. I mean, in, in fairness, I'll say I, I failed sadly at, at getting appropriate funding for the street department or transportation department, whichever you choose to call it. But if, if that doesn't turn around in the very few, next few years, you're going to throw away millions of dollars' worth of streets that the city has not taken care of. Maintenance is so much cheaper than completely rebuilding streets. I, I believe that the street department needs two additional employees, that's about $150,000, and at least $300,000 a year for contracting and, and materials. They, they need to have a crew crack sealing streets in the DOWs full-time, the whole season. We simply need to give consideration to what's been invested and, and how quickly we're losing that investment. You know, the bulk of the town's going to look like West Second Street if, if we don't start moving that rating in a, a different direction. I wish I had something more to say, but I encourage you to try and find some additional funding for the street department. I don't know if that's, if, if the lack of funding has been because of this public works manager, or, I don't know what the problem is. I know there's a problem, and I know that if it doesn't change soon, we'll all pay for it. I've lived here 75 years, and I don't really like where, where we're headed with this thing. Anyway, I think that's, and you might, might think about funding the police department and the codes enforcement department a little better as well. I think another half-time code enforcement person would improve the quality of life for the people that live here. That's it. I'm off my soapbox. I hope you all have a good evening, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Russ.
Julie, did you have something you wanted to say? Our city manager would like to address the council? I trust Isaiah's trying to unmute you?
Who? Oh, the city manager. I'm sorry. I'm not supposed to be listening.
This is a public meeting, Russ. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, Russ. I just wanted to...
Thank you, lady.
Briefly, and Dave may have something to add to it, too. But just in general terms, the last two budget years and the upcoming budget, we have put in $300,000 each year, plan to do that again this year, which all goes to street maintenance projects. And I know that last year, the Public Works did a huge, huge amount of work on crack sealing and fog sealing. They did the whole treatment. I can't remember how many miles, but it was substantial. And also, I know the Public Works Director is planning on changing in the upcoming budget, the street department structure, so that we'll actually have an additional person to work on the crew that won't be just like assigned amongst other departments. So I do think that we're making steps to address those concerns. I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, Russ.
Oh, you're welcome, Rich. Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else would like to address the city council for up to five minutes about any item that is not on the agenda? Going once?
Mr. Mayor, Roger Nichols has his electronic hand up, and so does Alana.
Okay, I didn't, I don't see those, but I trust you're correct, so why don't we go to Mr. Nichols? Will you please unmute Mr. Nichols? The city clerk's going to mute, unmute you, Roger. Just hold on.
I was just going to say, I'm sorry, I don't have my hand up, or if it is, it was accidental, and, and thank you for, Darcy, for noticing. My apologies.
Okay, Alana Lechner. Will you please unmute Alana Lechner?
Uh, yes, I also didn't have my hand up, at least not on purpose, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to item seven, city manager's report. Ms. Kruger.
I'm sorry, I lost my mouse there for a minute.
Thank you. Did it squeak?
I did.
I just have one quick item I wanted to bring to your attention. The city clerk sent to you last week a copy of a memorandum from Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue District, which was, the intent was to provide information that Council Richardson asked at our last council meeting on how would Mid-Columbia Fire and Rescue use the loan and, and what was the purpose. So that was provided, and there was some other information provided, too. And so I don't want to get us out of order in any way, shape, or form. I think we're on the right track with Matthew Kleeg's working on setting up meetings with the taxing entities. But I did want to just bring to your attention that item number two, which is, I think, on the third page of that memo, talked about the SIP sponsors supporting the community service fee being distributed among the variety of taxing entities based on a particular ORS. And so I just wanted to call to your attention, that is a discrepancy between what the district feels was agreed to and what the county and city negotiating team thought we agreed to. So as we're going through all these means with the taxing entities, we'll get that all worked out. But I believe it was the intention of Wasco County and City of the DOWs that that would include the schools to benefit from some of that tax, that community service fee. So just wanted to clarify that for you tonight. And that is my only report for tonight.
I would encourage you, after you read that, if you haven't already, if any questions, can certainly be referred to Julie or myself.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, city council reports. We'll start with Counselor Long.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I attended Government Affairs and listened to the mayor's update. And I also met with the mayor separately. And last Tuesday, which was the 18th, I attended the urban renewal meeting. And I was elected chair of urban renewal, and County Commissioner Kathy Schwartz was elected vice chair. And that is my report.
Thank you, Counselor. Let's see, Counselor Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, ditto essentially. I attended the urban renewal meeting last week and the Government Affairs at which you spoke. Thank you for that. And also a small garbage, roadway garbage cleanup project, and a few miscellaneous conversations with constituents.
Thank you. Counselor Randall?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Counselor Runyon?
Just a meeting with you, sir, and, let's see, Counselor Runyon joined us at that meeting at your request. That was about a week ago.
Counselor McGofflin?
There I am. All right. Meeting with you, Mayor Mays, multiple times, talking about very, various issues. I have a airport meeting tomorrow morning at 7 o'clock that was postponed from last week because of COVID scare. Well, one of the people on that meeting couldn't attend. We have, I've been meeting with various citizens, just like everyone else, and that's my report for this week.
Thank you. As far as my report, in addition to the Government Affairs and the other meetings that have been mentioned, I had a lengthy and productive meeting with County Commissioner Steve Kramer last week. Three other items are just more of announcements. This coming Friday, the Chamber of Commerce is having its annual distinguished award, distinguished citizen award banquet. It's going to be a virtual banquet, and I would like to encourage every council member to attend that, attend the banquet virtually. If there's a ticket involved, and I believe the city had, there's money in the budget for the city to purchase the ticket for you to attend that banquet. Also, on the climate change front, I think it's been about six weeks that the staff and I have been working on, trying to put together some sort of committee for the climate change issue. I want to let the council know I've been working pretty hard on that. I've had a nice conversation with Roger Klein from the Public Utility District about getting either him or some representation on there. I've also had a meeting with two citizens. I'm considering appointing to the committee. I also have two counselors who have indicated an interest in being on the committee, Counsel Randall and Counsel Richardson. Also, I had a nice discussion with Nicole Bailey from the North Coast, or excuse me, North Central Public Health District, indicated an interest in being on the committee. Lisa Gaby, who would represent Wasco County. And also, I was very pleasantly notified that Eric Hanson from our Public Works Department has indicated an interest to be the staff liaison. So I think we're off to a good start, but I'd certainly like to get some more representation from the various stakeholders we have in Wasco County and the city of the DOWs. And if any of the counselors have any suggestions, I would certainly be happy to entertain those. So please let me know whether it's an organization that you think might be well-represented, or an individual, please let me know. And finally, I've also been working on getting a committee, a citizens committee for the city manager recruitment to do, help us with interviews. The city of council, of course, would be one panel. Of course, the final decision on hiring a new city manager rests with the city council. But I have talked with seven individuals who have accepted the appointment. Our former mayor, Steve Lawrence, Jorge Bettergan, who is the owner of the Casa El Meridor restaurant, Nate Stice, who is with the governor's office and is also on the Columbia, Columbia Gorge Community College Board of Directors, Scott McKay, who wears many hats, but most recently, of course, was the director at the, the Dow Senior Center, Megan Thompson, who's the president of the Chamber of Commerce, Eddie Case, who is the manager at Cousins Restaurant and Country Inn, Corliss Marsh, everybody knows Corliss, she wears many hats, and Andrea Klass, who is with the Port of the DOWs. I have also three openings for department directors, and I'm working with Julie, of course, to get those three on board. All the people that have accepted know that the interviews will be taking place in, in mid-March, and will have to make themselves available for either one or two days. Just to keep the council updated, I've talked with Mr. Bill McDonald of Proffman and Associates several times over the last few weeks about how the applications are coming in, and I'm talking to him about the committee. And I got the schedule here in front of me. On February 13th is the closing date for the applications. So that is my report. Counselor, Counselor Long?
Yes, just, can you clarify for me that the community committee will be giving the council their feedback, but they won't be whittling the list down, correct? We will interview all the same people?
That is correct. The idea is that, let me get the schedule out, is that Proffman would have all the applications, and they would interview candidates. And according to this, they would probably interview about eight, they would probably interview as many as they could that they thought were qualified. And then they would, they would bring a list back to the city council, from eight to 15 for us to, and all of us would collectively decide who we want to invite in for a personal interview. Is that it's your question?
Sort of. What I'm saying is, when they go through the process of meeting with the community group and the committee, you know, what the process is, how is the community going to score them or write comments on each one? So city counselors can review their thoughts? Or are you intending for that group to whittle the list down further for city council? thoughts, or are you intending for that group to whittle the list down further for city council? Because I hope not.
No, actually, the answer is the first scenario you described. They would not be willing, they would not whittle the list down, they would be interviewing the candidates and giving the city council their feedback and their input on how they thought the interviews went, and how the candidates responded to their questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Richardson.
This may be out of order, and I apologize. I meant to ask staff two questions during my report at an appropriate time. Can you give me a minute to, to ask those?
I guess now is as good a time as any.
Thank you. Apologize. First is, I know that, because there's been some report, but I do know that we've had a lot of folks out in the city staff for COVID. Can I just get a sense of how, what's going on with that, how our, how our staff is doing, impacts, that sort of thing?
Yeah, Julie, go ahead.
Thank you. It's a little delayed. I'm used to just jumping right in, sorry about that. Our Public Works Department has been able to reopen today, so that's going well. That group is pretty well recovered. Our Police Department has had a fair amount of people out with COVID, and they decided this week that they're going to close the office to the public so that there's not any extra traffic coming in. We have a couple folks at City Hall that are tested positive for COVID, but we're remaining open here. Everyone is following the masking protocols, washing hands, doing all the precautions, but it definitely has impacted us. No one's going to get it through the computer, Tom. We've been doing a really good job of just staying on track and doing everything we need to do. And then as we have outbreaks, we'll probably do some rolling closures if we need to. It's been a real challenge the last couple weeks.
No doubt. Thank you. Take care. Thank you. My second unrelated question is, I'll preface it with a thought, which is, we had a really productive kind of goal-setting or the preparatory session, work session at the beginning of last year, and we may have sort of missed the window on that for this year. I should have maybe been a little bit more mindful. But I would like to, just as a general statement, be thinking about issues that might benefit from work sessions that are not just council meetings, but are specific to digging into issues that may take some time. The State Building, which I'm not asking for a work session on that, but that might have, that might have benefited from a sort of a separate session where we could have dug into that a little bit at our leisure, and had maybe a little bit of time to reflect on that. But at any rate, that's a general comment. I'm wondering specifically if there might be an opportunity for us to have some goal-setting, perhaps in the visioning process, which I believe was kind of knocked, knocked off the rails by COVID, but is still somewhere on the tracks?
It's there, if I may. Alice Cannon and I have a meeting next Monday at 9:00 a.m. with the Vision Consultants that the city has hired. We're going to go over where we are, and then talk about how we're going to get back with the council. We have a, I think, a small presentation that we may want to do that goes over some of the survey points and how the answers came back. And then we need to have a conversation about how, how do we move forward. It was so important last year to the council that, during our goal-setting, that the council would be heavily involved in that. And because of the COVID, they weren't able to do the in-person meetings. So we need to strategize about that with our consultants on Monday, and figure out how we can bring everyone back in. And Counsel Richardson, you're correct, the reason why we didn't do a goal-setting in January this year was because of the visioning and having the, we needed to have that document, or at least some good information from the process for the council to then build their goals on. And the other piece of that was that you, I believe we talked about this in my evaluation, that we wouldn't do it in January because you'll have a new city manager. So you'll have a new vision document, sit down with your new city manager this summer, and have like a mid-year goal-setting type thing.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're to item nine, the Consent Agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the Consent Agenda to allow the City Council to spend its time and energy on the important items and issues. Any counselor may request an item be pulled from the Consent Agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the Consent Agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the Action Items section. We have two items on the Consent Agenda. One is the approval of the January 10th Council Minute, Council Meeting Minutes, and the second is a resolution abating, it's an abatement in regards to an abatement lien. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Actually have one, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I actually have one, a request for an amendment to the minutes, if I may.
Okay.
And then I would be happy to make a motion. On page 218 of our council packet, this is discussing the proposed loan to the Fire District in the CSF funds last, last meeting. And it says that Richardson said he was not in favor of the loan. I had hoped to make the point that I was not in favor of a loan that was not, didn't have transparency as to its purpose. I don't really have an opinion about the loan as such, but I do think that it ought to be, that we ought to be transparent, both they and us, just for the principle of having sort of an open and transparent government. So if that would be an acceptable amendment or edit, then I would be happy to make a motion to accept the consent agenda with that edit.
Counselor, you did say, the very next sentence says, he said he needed more details, such as why do they need the funds and what they would be used for. You don't think that surprises?
If that feels clear to everybody who has read it, then that's fine. I'm, I have no particular axe to grind with regard to this loan.
It's clear to me, McGlaughlin.
All right. If I've made my point, then I'll, then I'll withdraw that, and I'll make the motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second, McGlaughlin, second.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Richardson and submitted by Counselor McGlaughlin to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 10A is a Special Ordinance Annoxing Property. And I believe we have a public hearing. I do want to point out that there is an error in the staff report for the public hearing. The ordinance itself is correct, the special ordinance, but the agency, the Agenda Staff Report refers to number 22-590, and it should be 22-593. This is just a clerical error, it does not affect the adoption of the ordinance. We just have to make sure the motion is for Special Ordinance 22-593. With that, pursuant to the City of the Dows Charter, Chapter 8, Section 31, now is the time to conduct a public hearing to receive testimony regarding annexation of property located in the 2500 block of East 18th Street, and approval of Special Ordinance Number 22-593, annexing the property in the urban growth boundary of the city pursuant to O R S 22, 222 dot 125. I will open the public hearing, ask for a staff report, and then we'll take testimony regarding the proposed assessments. I believe that should be annexations. The public hearing will then be closed, and the matter will be turned over to the City Council for deliberation and consideration of Special Ordinance 22-593. I am now declaring the public hearing open.
Thank you, Honorable, sorry, sorry, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Counselors. As you stated, this is a public hearing for an annexation of property located in the 2500 block of East 18th Street, approval of Special Ordinance 22-593. Apologies for the error. Annexing this property in the urban growth boundary pursuant to our O R S. Background, the affected property proposed to be annexed, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here really quick with you. Here we go. So as stated, Annexation 79-21, and the property owner is Ed Nelson. Provided just a map here to kind of give you an idea of what the property is that we're going to be annexing. The notice was sent to the property owner on January 7th, and as well as published in the local newspaper, as required by municipal code. In terms of process, the annexation application is processed under Municipal Code Title 10, Article 14, which is annexations, and annexation shall be processed under Legislative Action, which is what this public hearing processes, the, as well as heard by City Council. In terms of the criteria, the criteria states that the property is contiguous to city limits and qualifies for, as a consent to annex. So the property actually is contiguous to a public right-of-way, and that would make it sufficient to be annexed. The property is located in the net urban growth boundary. The development is compatible and consistent with rational and logical extension of utilities. So the property is zoned residential and currently vacant with plans for a single-family development. The city is capable of providing and maintaining a full range of urban services, so this has been confirmed. And the annexation conforms to a comprehensive plan, and is stated in Finding 5, Goal 14, urbanization, as well as Subgoal 14, to coordinate with Wasco County in order to manage the urban growth boundary for conversion of land within the boundary for urban uses. So the city agrees that this is, meets that requirement. Policy 5 of Goal 14 of the city's comp plan, details adequate public utilities and public facilities such as roads and streetlights, as well as detailing the official plat of the parcel shall be recorded. So Subgoal, excuse me, Subgoal 3 of Goal 14 of the comp plan, again, states that the orderly and efficient provision of public facilities and services, this proposed annexation complies with that Subgoal. Inclusion of this property in the city limits is going to provide an opportunity for the city to plan and design our public utilities and facilities, including streets and storm systems, as well as water and sewer, and ensure that the city can provide the necessary public services to its citizens in an orderly and efficient manner. Property B annexed, excuse me, so in your staff report or attached to the Special Ordinance is the Assessor's Map, which is included here. This yellow parcel here is identified, that is Exhibit A, and the property is located in the 2500 block of East 18th Street. Budget implications, this annexation is planned to be completed in time for the city to begin receiving its share of property taxes from the designated parcels by November 2023. Council alternatives, staff's recommendation is move to approve the proposed consent annex for the property located in the 2500 block of East 18th, as detailed in Application ANX 79-21, and adopt Special Ordinance Number 22-593. Do you have any questions, Steph?
Before we get to public testimony, does anybody on the City Council have any questions for Ms. Her, Counselor Runyon?
Nothing real big. In the background paragraph of the paper that we received, the last sentence says, "The parcel is zoned residential, and the property owner applied to annex as part of a condition of approval for a minor partition." Can you explain that in English?
Oh, sure. Sorry about that. So when people come to develop their land and/or partition their land, and we have a requirement, if the property is not currently annexed into the city, we require that they complete or fill out a form that's called a consent to annex. And as you're aware, so we do include that as a condition of approval to a partition of land. So as you're aware, we're starting to be a little bit more quick in terms of those consents to annex, and as soon as we get them, we're trying to bring them to you and get those annexed in, in all possible ways.
I just was looking for a little clarity for the general public that's listening and may not have that knowledge.
Perfect. I appreciate that.
The other thing was, the, the map you showed on your presentation, and the one we received with some red lines, is, are, do we have kind of a hodgepodge of what's inside the urban renewal, and what isn't, and, or the annexation area?
Sure. So let me go ahead, I'll, I'll share that screen again, and I'll show you what we've got in the urban growth boundary, as well as, here we go. And share screen. Okay. So on this map, so I did, this is just more for reference. So to, to show you, so the blue areas are the city limits, are the current city limits. As you may recall, a few months ago, we had, and actually, we're going to be talking about them in a few minutes, these pink areas were also included with the annexation, some of the right-of-way that was included. So current city limits, pink was previously annexed, and yellow is currently planned to be annexed, which is this application.
But you don't have the same map that we got in our packet in front of you there with the red lines.
So this one, yes.
Yeah, there we go. And I was just watching that go across, and then up, and around, and down, and beside another one, and wondering what all that was about.
Right. Well, a lot of that is, is the Department of Cartography, so that's a tax assessor's map. So a lot of these lines can be boundaries, and it's like, some of these instances here, you're dealing with partition plats that had occurred. So you'll see in some areas that have had recent partitions, or partitions that have occurred, you know, in the last, actually, probably in the life of the parcel, that identifies those areas. And you can see, like, partition plat, and it dates there. So in terms of city limits shown here, this gray area with the green boundary line, that actually shows where our current city limits is. So what we'll end up, oops, sorry about that, click that. So what we end up being doing is taking this parcel in, and moving this boundary here to incorporate it here.
All right. Mayor Mays, may I ask a question? Two, two parcels to the right, and there's, it looks like there's a line that divides, is that a divided parcel there?
So this, this is correct. So the, these here, are, Counselor McGlaughlin, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
So those, those were, were partitioned. So those are two parcels there, and this is, is one parcel.
Got it. And then I noticed that there were some white that was among yellow. It's like they're just a small grouping. Is there a plan to incorporate those properties into the city limits?
So the property, so it'd be property to the west of?
No. Can you go back a slide?
Sure.
This will be a quick question. It would be the, across the street from 18th on the north side.
Right. So, so the way that our code is written is, anytime that we get an application in for development, and/or partition, development would be either developing a, you know, building a single-family home, as or partitioning further, that's when we would be requiring them to do the annexation, or assign a consent, and we would proceed. So at this time, we do not have any consent to annex. So at this time, we do not have any consent to annex forms for any of those parcels, and basically as they go, we would then require that. That property owners could technically request to be annexed also, and you know, be, be fill out that form and proceed with us if they choose to do so.
Understood, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for Ms. Hurd? Okay, we'll now move the testimony from the public, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the City Council relating to the special ordinance and this, this proposed annexation, anybody? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll assume that there is no public testimony. Okay. I will now declare the, the public hearing closed. And let's have some deliberation by the City Council, how would the council like to proceed? Or does anyone have any, many, any discussion they'd like to? Does anyone wish to have the ordinance read in full?
No.
No.
I take that as five noes. Okay, if there isn't any more discussion, well, let's have the city clerk read it, read the read the ordinance by, by title only. Ms. Grossman.
Special ordinance number twenty-two, five-nine-three, an ordinance annexing a certain additional property located in the urban growth boundary of the city of the Dells pursuant to O R S two-two-two. Dot one-two-five consent annexation. A N X number seventy-nine, twenty-one, Nelson.
Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to adopt a special ordinance? Counsel long.
I'll move to approve the proposed consent annexation for the property located in the twenty-five-hundred block of East Eighteenth as detailed in application A N X number seventy-nine dash twenty-one and adopt special ordinance number twenty-two dash five-ninety-three by title only.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Counsel Long and seconded by Counsel Richardson to approve the ordinance. Is there any more discussion? Or questions? All those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Go aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, item eleven A is approval of a local agency agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Members of Council. There's been plans for a number of years now to extend the center turn lane on West Sixth Street, westward from Snipes, where it currently ends up to Hosteller Street. And the reason for this is to improve traffic safety, as there have been a number of traffic accidents in that area over the years. Mainly related to vehicles stopping, westbound vehicles stopping to make left-hand turns and getting rear-ended by the vehicles behind them. It's also been reported by city police officers over the years that they've witnessed a number of near misses of close to having head-on collisions as people move into the oncoming lane, not realizing that there's no center turn lane in that section of of Sixth Street. Given that need to extend the center turn lane, staff has been developed the concept for a project, and we've sought funding for over ten years to implement the project, and in this last round, we were successful in being awarded funding from ODOT's All Roads Transportation Safety or Arts Program. And this, the agreement under consideration tonight would finalize the award of that funding. The project would entail the elements to widen the street to other center turn lane. We'd regrade and repave the street to improve drainage, reconstruct all the adjacent sidewalks to provide ADA compliant sidewalks, ramps and drive approaches, and then also add street lighting and make some other safety improvements at the intersection of Sixth and Hosteller that have been identified as being beneficial. City would need to acquire right-of-way from two properties along West Sixth Street for that project to proceed. Under the arts program, ODOT can provide up to ninety-two point two, two-two percent of a project's cost. And the product estimated cost of this project is a million dollars. Therefore, ODOT would be able to provide nine-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, two-hundred dollars for the project, and the city would be obligated to pay seventy-seven-thousand-eight-hundred dollars if the project came out to the full million-dollar cost. The city would also be responsible for any costs over a million dollars. Unless there was an amendment to the agreement. If when it came time to implement the project, the city decided that it couldn't afford the match, we could cancel the project and return the award without any obligations. It's planned that the city would design the project with their in-house engineering staff and construct the project with contracted resources. And construction of the project would likely, likely occur either late this year or in twenty-twenty-three. If the budget allocation, if the proposed local agency agreement is authorized, the city would receive up to nine-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-two-hundred dollars in federal funds which are administered by ODOT for the West Sixth Street Improvement Project. The city would be obligated to provide seventy-seven-thousand-eight-hundred dollars towards completion of the project at the cost of a million dollars and any cost of the project above the million dollars. And the city may also need to expend funds to acquire the needed right-of-way from two parcels adjacent to the project. With that, it's staff's recommendation that City Council move to authorize the city manager to enter into a local agency agreement number seven-three-zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-three-eight-seven-two with ODOT to provide funding for the West Sixth Street Improvements Project.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, does the council have any questions for Mr. Anderson? Any comments, Council Runyon?
Just, just to put a visual in the mind of the public here, as I went around that area today. There's a gas station there, and then what I would call the Jones property going to the east. And so I'm assuming there's sidewalks there at the gas station property. That, is that what's ultimately going to happen, is that sidewalk will continue along in a straight line? And then they, your turn, your turn lanes and whatnot will be a part of that.
Yes, yes.
So, so that'll improve the, the walking for pedestrians and our citizens and so forth.
Significant pedestrian improvement in that section of town, yes.
Yeah, is that kind of the goal the rest of the way down the road to make that all meet up at some point?
Well, this would take us down to Hosteller, which is basically just past Spooky's. And then, yes, long-term, the goal would ultimately to get a sidewalk all along Sixth Street, especially as we get out towards the transportation center. We don't necessarily have a, a design or a concept for doing that yet. Nor have we, you know, that would be kind of like the next thing we would pursue funding for.
Yeah, but it's kind of the, the visual that's out there to try to get that all done. Be somewhat uniform, thank you.
Council Richardson.
Thank you, Director Anderson, how recent is the one billion dollar project estimate, or was that the estimate?
It, it was the estimate, that cost assessment is a couple of years old. But it also included the contracted engineering, and that's the way we're actually considering our contingency for this project by doing the engineering in-house. We feel that's our contingency for the construction phase.
So that's, that still seems within ballpark to you, is that?
It's, it's, we, we hope that it is, yes, I mean, we're experiencing pretty significant inflation on construction pricing. Yeah. We have over the last year, year and a half. It's anybody's guess whether how far that's or how long that's going to continue. But right now, I feel pretty good about the, the main dollar cost assessment for the project.
Well, that's a screaming deal, so thanks for pursuing that.
It is.
Welcome.
Counsel long.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that this project has a really great return on investment, both in factors of public safety, of course, being number one, but also just the, the matching of small amount of local funds, essentially, you know, with another ninety, almost ninety-two, just over ninety-two percent from the federal government. And Dave, I know you just view this as part of your job, but I just want to say to you and everyone else at the city who goes after these federal grants for us that I know how difficult it is both to apply for them successfully and then also to implement them. And so I thank you for your willingness to do this for us and for our town.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Long. Any other questions or comments? Counsel McLaughlin, did you have your hand up?
Nope, I just scratched him right there.
Okay, with that. Looking for a motion.
I, Mayor May's, I can go ahead and do that. I'll move to authorize the city manager to enter in local agency agreement number seventy-three zero-zero-zero-dash zero-zero-zero-three-eight-seven-two with ODOT to provide funding for the West Sixth Street Improvements Project. Period.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Counsel McLaughlin and seconded, excuse me, by Counsel Runyon to approve the agreement with ODOT. Is there any more discussion?
Just a, a note here that I think on the second set of zeros, he read three on, well, instead of four.
One, two, three, four, let's have a, roll the tape back, all right, let's check that. Only you, Rod Runyon. All right. Let's move on.
Let's do, let's vote, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. McLaughlin, aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously, thank you, Dave.
On the table show, I was corrected.
Oh, man. I doubt it.
Okay. Item eleven B. Consider recommendation for the rejection of bids for the Trevitt Street Utility Upgrades, I trust it's our city in Mr. Anderson, are you going to do that one?
I'll, I'll go ahead and do this one too, and our city engineers here, if we need his assistant with some questions, but thank you, Honorable Mayor and Members of Council. The Public Works Department advertised for the bids for the Trevitt Street Utility Upgrade Project Phase One, which was contract number twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-one-one. That project would have provided for the installation of about twenty-two-hundred-and-five feet of sanitary sewer pipe ranging from four to ten inches in diameter in Trevitt Street. The Trevitt Street project is required to, is needed to replace and upsize deteriorating failing sanitary sewer mains, improve stormwater collection systems, eliminate some of the existing utility conflicts that have occurred between sanitary sewer main lines and franchise utilities, which are the gas primarily the gas lines, and utility, and ultimately reconstruct the failing street surfaces and replace non-ADA compliant sidewalks. Project is planned and completed through a number of phases over several years, and this phase one project was considered was to consist of replacing and upgrading the sanitary sewer mains in Trevitt between ninth and twelfth streets. Additional phases will ultimately upgrade and correct utility conflicts in Trevitt Street up to West Seventeenth Street intersection. Once the utility upgrading projects have been completed, we then issue a contract, rebuild the street surfaces of sidewalks all the way from Sixth to Seventeenth Street. For this, for this phase one project, and prior to the bid opening, the city issued one addendum which would have increased which was intended to increase the amount of eight-inch sanitary sewer pipe to be installed for the project. And the city emailed that addendum directly to all the potential bidders who had pre-qualified for the project. We had the bid opening on December sixteenth, and we received three bids, the results of which are provided in your report. The low, apparent low bid was provided by Crestline Construction, but upon review, it was found that Crestline had failed to acknowledge the addendum that had been issued as required by the contract. The other two bids received were deemed to be complete and responsive. Staff consulted with the city attorney, and it was determined that the bid from Crestline Construction was non-responsive because of its failure to acknowledge addendum, and that addendum materially affected its bid price. Per the city's local contract review board rules, the city must reject a bid upon the finding that the bid is not in substantial compliance with the solicitation pursuant to rule zero-four-dash-zero-four-twenty-F. As I mentioned before, the other two bids were deemed responsive and complete, but they both came in at an amount that substantially exceeded the amount of funds that we had available for the project. The city may reject all bids for good cause upon a city's written finding that it's in the public interest to do so consistent with the local contract review board rules. And those required findings could be adopted by resolution. With this report, we're recommending that the City Council find that it's in the public interest to reject all the bids due to insufficient funds for the project based upon responsive bids received. The attached resolution number twenty-two dash zero-zero-five presented for the City Council's consideration makes the required finding and rejects all bids for the, for contract number twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-eleven. If the bids for this contract are rejected, staff plans to re-scope, rebudget and rebid for the project in the future. The budget implications are that we had a total of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars budgeted for the project and the sewer special reserve fund. The lowest responsive bid was three-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventeen dollars over that about budgeted amount. If all bids for contract number twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-eleven are rejected, those budgeted funds will carry over reallocation in a future fiscal year. And with that, it's staff's recommendation that the council move to adopt resolution number twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-five rejecting all bids for contract number twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-eleven, the Trevitt Street Utility Upgrade Phase One Project. And with that, I take any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Anderson?
Dave, do you have an idea about when you would put that back out to bid?
We'll probably wait until we go through the budget process this year. And, you know, reprioritize it with our current needs and the funding available through that, identified through that budget process. So not until after July of twenty-twenty-two.
Thanks.
Counsel long.
And are you anticipating increasing the amount then based on kind of the response that we got since we weren't budgeting anywhere near that?
Yeah, we actually had seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars budgeted, and you'll notice that the low bid would have been responsive, was right there. But if it would have accommodated the, the addendum, it would have been, the, their bid would have been about sixty-five thousand dollars higher. So yes, we'll adjust the budget by, amount budgeted for the project before we relish, rebid it.
And does that cause any kind of problem since it's, project's going to be done in phases, or will you step up the second phase to keep on the overall timeline?
Yeah, uh, no, it doesn't really create a problem for us that way. We've been, had this project in our capital improvement plan for so long, we finally got to the point where we could pull the trigger on the first phase. And the whole project is going to be timed and implemented based upon affordability.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number two-two-dash-zero-zero-five, rejecting all bids for contract number two-zero-two-one dash zero-one-one, the Trevitt Street Utility Upgrades Phase One Project.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Counsel Randall, seconded by Counsel Long to accept the recommendation of the staff to reject all those bids. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Finally, we have, I guess we can consider these together, if I'm mistaken, please let me know, but we have two special ordinances to consider correcting legal description of property, Ms. Hurt or Ms. Cannon?
Thank, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilors, I do, I've got it really quick. Go ahead and do, do it pretty quick, so. Go ahead and do, do it pretty quick. So, um, so for the first one is, which is twelve A, Special Ordinance Number twenty-two dash five nine one. Uh, this is correcting legal map description of a property in Special Ordinance twenty-one five eighty-nine for the Annexation seventy-eight dash twenty-one Baker parcel. So as stated in the background information, we had sent these descriptions and the special ordinance onto the Department of Revenue to gain approval and found that there were some errors. And basically with this application is the map did not match the legal description. Staff since then, uh, provided a map to the, uh, Department of Revenue. That map was accepted to meet the legal description. Uh, that is what we're bringing to you today is the modification, uh, for the new special ordinance, including a new exhibit A. Terms of budget implications, uh, this, due to the necessary revision, this actually ends up bumping it to the next, uh, tax, property tax, um, uh, we will be able to be, uh, excuse me, accepting the monies starting November twenty twenty-three, which is technically one year later than originally approved. Uh, council alternatives is number one, staff recommendation, move to adopt special ordinance number twenty-two five ninety-one, amending exhibit A of special ordinance number twenty-one dash five eighty-nine to correct the map to match the legal description by title only. And do we want to, I guess in terms of process, I can, we can move, we probably need to keep these separate. I would assume we probably need to have a, a, a motion on that one separately from the other one.
Why don't we entertain questions on either one of them since they're so I get so, uh, similar.
Okay.
But then we'll have two separate motions unless
okay.
Unless the city attorney or someone else thinks that we can do it in one motion. So, um, with that, I'll open it up for questions or comments from the sta, uh, from the city council for the staff on either one of these two.
This is basically housekeeping, right? I mean, so that we can collect the taxes.
That is correct. It, it's unfortunate, excuse me, it's unfortunate that we weren't able, uh, to, to get some input from the Department of Revenue before. So I mean, it has happened before, unfortunately, but, um, I think Izetta and I are, we're right there. I think we've got it all figured out now.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, why don't I, I'm looking for a motion to approve the first one, uh, to adopt, uh, ordinance number twenty-two dash five ninety-one.
I'll make a motion.
Excuse, excuse me. City manager, can you confirm, do they need to adopt this by title only? Which means we have to go through the process of me reading the title.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so would you like to, um, please read the, uh, the ordinance by title only, Ms. Grossman?
It's no one wants it read in full, right?
Correct, I do not.
Sorry, I forgot to ask that.
That's okay.
That question. If so, please mute yourself. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Grossman.
Special ordinance number twenty-two dash five nine one, correcting legal description of pro, property in special ordinance number twenty-one dash five eight nine to correct the map to match the legal description.
Okay, I think, uh, I heard a few voices try to make that motion. You want to run those by me again, somebody?
Anna Richardson, did you?
I did. Council. Mayor, I would, I would move, I would move to adopt special ordinance number twenty-two dash five nine one, amending exhibit A of special ordinance number twenty-one dash five eight nine to correct the map, match the legal description by title only.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Council Richardson and seconded by Council Long to adopt the special ordinance twenty-two dash five nine one. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Would anybody like to, um, have the special ordinance twenty-two dash five nine two read in its entirety? Okay, will the city clerk please read it by title only?
Special ordinance number twenty-two dash five nine two, amending exhibit A and exhibit C of special ordinance number twenty-one dash five eight seven to correct tact, correct certain legal descriptions and map by title only.
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, sure, I'll do it. Uh, Mayor Maze, I move to adopt special ordinance number twenty-two dash five nine two, amending exhibit A and exhibit C of special ordinance number twenty-one dash five eighty-seven to correct certain legal discrepancies, descriptions and map by title only.
Is there a second?
Second that.
It's been moved by Council McGlaughlin and seconded by Council Randall to adopt special ordinance twenty-two dash five nine two. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any other business to come before the city council? Council Runyon?
I just want to, uh, thank Izetta for enabling us all to be on one screen, at least on my screen. I think it's very important that we see each other as we talk and so forth. Uh, it's the next best thing to be in there, right? So thank you. Whoever passed that on, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else, uh, any other business to come before the council? I'd like to point out, we got done with this meeting, uh, a full hour and a half shorter than our last two meetings.
Keep it up, buddy.
Yes.
And with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much for attending.
Thank you for all your work. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, Julie and Angie.
Thanks.